Are they on the waiting list, or they just, since they're registered, they can just join?
Yeah, so we've already got some attendees coming on in.
Oh, it's, okay. Right. I see that folks are still coming on, so I'm going to give it a couple minutes before we get things going.
Oh, I gotta get my button up button.
Yes.
And you've got your capstone hat on too, Kyle.
I don't know if you can see it or not.
You could pull out my LCPC vest.
Yeah. And I'm gonna go ahead and hit record. Oh, we're recording.
All right. I'm gonna wait just one more minute, and then we are gonna get started.
Any good weatherization jokes out there?
Uh, not too many these days. Trying to think.
Well, I have one, I have one really bad one.
Okay.
What did, why did the pirate weatherize?
Not sure.
Because he wanted to increase his R value.
I'll have to keep that in memory bank till later.
Thank you.
All right. Let's get started. We seem to have stabilized our number of participants at eighteen. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lea Kilvadiova, and I work for the LaMoyole County Planning Commission. And I'm really pleased that we have an opportunity this evening to join forces with Button Up, Efficiency Vermont, and Capstone Community Action to talk about weatherization. We have two presenters tonight. One is Becca White of Efficiency Vermont, and the other one is Kyle McDonald from Capstone Community Action. They each will have a presentation. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity for an Q and A. In Q and A, we will open up an opportunity for folks to speak up. But if you do have a burning question during the presentations, I will be monitoring the chat, so hopefully we'll get those questions in. But if for some reason we don't manage, please do bring them again in the Q and A. We are aiming to complete within one hour, so hopefully your questions will get answered. And we are recording the presentation tonight, so if you have friends who would like to watch this at a different timeframe, the presentation will be available. And with that, I will turn it to Becca White.
Awesome. Thanks, Lea. I'm excited to be here on what is the first of some very cold nights that are coming up for the rest of us as winter begins. So I see we already had in the Q and A, someone is in a pretty cold room. So this is a very relevant topic. But yeah, my name is Becca White. I work for Efficiency Vermont, and I have the pleasure of coordinating the Button Up Vermont campaign for Efficiency Vermont. As Lea just introduced, we got a couple of topics for you tonight. I'll also be spending some time talking about tips for renters and landlords, so this is a great opportunity if you are a homeowner. We'll be covering that, but also for renters and landlords, there's a special section for you. And then I'll be passing the microphone over to Kyle once we're wrapped up with that. So to kick things off, the Button Up Vermont campaign is a statewide educational effort around weatherization in Vermont. And it's not an organization or a campaign that just has one kind of leader. It's a partnership or coalition of different organizations, many of whom are featured here. We've got our fabulous regional planning commissions like the lovely LaMoyole. You've got your great group up here, but every single regional planning commission is participating in the state, so that's pretty cool. So shout out to that group. And then we've also got just about every utility company in the state. So participating, which is a great show as well. So I'm gonna spend some time talking about what buttoning up is, why you would want to button up the value of weatherization, and then where to get started, and all kind of gloss over the income eligibility piece, because we've got Kyle, who can dive more deeply into that section of things. So favorite slide of the whole presentation, I start big. It's on what weatherization and buttoning up actually looks like. So when you think about insulation and air sealing, this diagram is the best analogy that I can think of when it comes to explaining why we talk about insulation and air sealing together. So the first bit is your sweater. Maybe you don't have a button up scarf on, but you've got like a big cable knit sweater. That's your insulation. But that insulation does you good only to a certain extent. So if you walk outside in your beautiful cable knit sweater, you've still got all those air holes. And that insulation on a wintery January day, you actually still feel the cold air come right between the threads. So you're gonna wanna not only have your sweater, but add that windbreaker on top of it that signifies our air sealing to get rid of and remove those holes, which prevents cold air from getting in and that hot air from getting out. So that combo is what you get when you have, when you provide air sealing and insulation together. You get that comfort and savings. So for buttoning up your home, this is actually what it looks like in a home when we talk about the stack effect, and that's essentially the principle that we all know warm air rises. But when there are holes or leaks in your home, the hot air will actually escape through the holes in the roof for the attic or upper stories, and the cold air and drafts will come in through leaks in your basement or the lower stories. So again, that's actually what we call the stack effect. And if you're looking at the video of me, I actually kind of, I always do this hand motion, because it's like that as it rises up and out of your home. So those leaks make your insulation less effective, and that air movement reduces how well your insulation can do its job, just like that sweater analogy we talked about earlier. So some very common leaks that you're gonna wanna look out for with air sealing are fan vents, that could be your bathroom, kitchen, dryer, attic hatches, chimneys, recessed lighting, outlets, doors, windows, basements. Anywhere there are joints or corners or places where the walls meet, essentially, there are all sorts of spots that you could see benefit from air sealing in your home. And when we talk about insulation in particular, you wanna prioritize insulation in all the places with those most common leaks. So really, these are the spots that you would consider prioritizing insulation in a home. Okay, so now that you're building science experts, and you totally understand all the ins and outs of weatherization, air sealing, and insulation, I wanna spend a bit of time on telling you why you would even wanna endeavor on doing a weatherization project. And for a lot of us, we talk about the saving money piece is the number one factor for why we might endeavor into a weatherization project. And if you're going to a comprehensive weatherization project, the average Vermont household can save anywhere from five hundred to eight hundred dollars per year in fuel costs. And historically, we've seen that Vermonters have saved about fifteen percent after a project is completed. So this not only saves money for you, like saves money for you as a homeowner or a business owner, it actually also saves money for the state of Vermont. So when we spend money on fossil fuel for heating our homes, it actually, we actually see seventy percent of that leaving the state. So when you think about saving money, it's that twofold of not just your home, but also the state and supporting our state economy. This is my, for increased comfort, this is the Becca Guarantee or the Becca Promise. I don't know how to put it. But if you have, or guilt trip free moment, I don't know. But if you have a room in your house, and I say this every time, and you're a Vermonter, and you have a room in your house that you don't use for part of the year, we, everyone knows somebody who has this situation. You don't need to live like that. If it gets too hot or too cold and you just don't use it, you can weatherize and make that a livable space. Like, the reason I bring it up is that's what I think about with increased comfort, because of this room that I'm in right now that I spend a lot of time in. This office space was not usable before we weatherized our home, because it meant we had to heat with a little air, a little electric heater constantly, and it also was unbearable in the summer. So increasing comfort, you can use every place in your home when you weatherize, and actually, in addition to increasing the comfort, you're also increasing the air quality in your home, which can be a great benefit for your family's health, and I know a lot of us are thinking about that now. Last two things, saving energy. You not only want to think about saving money, but you also want to think about wasting fuel. When you button up your homes, you reduce that energy. And then last, but certainly not least, reducing carbon pollution. So right along with saving energy, that's the reducing carbon pollution piece. So the less fuel we burn, the fewer pollutants end up in our atmosphere, and that's what contributes to climate change. So as of 2015, we know that twenty-eight percent of Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions actually come from heating our buildings, and that's the second largest sector that contributes to carbon pollution in our state, second only to transportation. Just to add a little more oomph to that act, we have some statewide energy goals, and that's a big piece to why you might consider reducing carbon pollution is thinking about the role that you play as a member or community member of the state of Vermont. So how would you get started now that you're a building science expert on weatherization, and you have been thoroughly persuaded about the value? You would get started by doing any of the following three things. You could look into income eligible weatherizations through the Weatherization Assistant Program in your area. Talk about that more later. You could look into comprehensive weatherization with the Home Performance with Energy Star program, where you with an Efficiency Excellence Network contractor. Or you could do it yourself. So DIY is an option for very handy Vermonters, and I'll talk a bit more about that rebate, but the high level here is that there are all sorts of options for weatherizing your home and different ways that you can do big projects or small projects, and all of it has a benefit when we think about the values we just talked about with weatherization. So income eligible homeowners, there's free weatherization services for that group of folks. You are gonna stick around for Capstone's presentation. That's gonna be your, your organization to talk to if you are in this part of the state. And if you are not joined us, also have some opportunity if you live in other parts of the state too. For homeowners, if you're considering doing a project, there is a financing option for you, the Home Energy Loan. That's actually what we did when we weatherized, and what we saw was we actually paid less in heating fuel that we saved than we do in a monthly payment to pay off the Home Energy Loan. So that's really cool. And it's because it's a low interest financing option. And you could also bundle not just a weatherization project, but other efficiency projects into the loan. And I oftentimes get questions about this particular idea, which is if you need to weatherize your home, or you wanna fund weatherizing your home, but you also have health and safety improvement, want to do, let's say knob and tube wiring or remediation work of some sort, up to fifty percent of a Home Energy Loan can be used for safety updates. So if that's something that you're thinking about, you wanna focus on those, you can actually bundle it together with the Home Energy Loan, and maybe even throw in a heat pump or a modern wood stove there too. The do it yourself rebate, you can get a hundred dollars back if you do any of the three following projects on this list of six. I know we could all do it. We could get this done in a weekend for many of us, so definitely something to consider. So some next steps you would do is you can call customer support at Efficiency Vermont with that number right there. You could also schedule a free home energy visit today. So we are not doing those in person because of COVID-19, but we are offering them virtually. So if you would like to have a virtual free home energy visit, I can put the link in the chat, and you can schedule that. The available dates start in January, and you can give a shout out to your Regional Planning Commission for being a Button Up participant, because that's why you get access to those free home energy visits. You could also check out the Find a Contractor page if you know you wanna get going right away. You could call Capstone, and if for some reason you snuck in and you're a Burlington resident, there is also some programs for you in Burlington Electric from BED. Cool, so I'm gonna jump into the efficiency tips for renters, but-
Becca, if you don't mind, we have a question. We went through the slide of the six things to do for DIY, if we could go back to that.
Yeah, let's. Yeah, and I can also put, when I wrap up, I'll just make a little note. I'm gonna put in the link for the visits, and I'll put in the link for the DIY rebate page, so you don't have to memorize it right at this moment. Cool. Thanks. Good question, Deborah. Okay, so efficiency tips for renters and landlords. So we get this question quite a bit about what can renters do, because, you know, frankly, it can be frustrating, because if you feel like you don't have control of your energy costs in your home or your apartment, that can feel, that's difficult. But there actually are quite a few things you can do to reduce your energy costs if you are a renter. We've got some animation, so get ready. So if you have an apartment or a house that has its own thermostat, you could actually set the temperature down seven to ten degrees for eight hours a day. So that might be when you're sleeping. Or if you are one of the brave souls who does not work from home right now, when you're away at work, you could set down the temperature for a bit. You could also make sure that the light bulbs in your commonly used spaces are LED. My tip on this is we have a range hood in my kitchen that we're using as our, I don't know, replacement nightlight, you know, so you don't bump into something in the kitchen. So we have that light on all the time. Turns out that was just about the only light we had not replaced with an LED, because it just was a hidden spot. So check for those locations that you might not think about, or that are commonly used, and think about swapping to an LED to save some money. Okay, this is, I have to pause on this one, because this is truly the most disgusting thing you could spend time doing on this whole presentation, cleaning out your vacuum, you know, your vents or your ducts or what have you. But if you have a chance to clean out your bathroom fan, and you do it, get in there, and you will be happily surprised at the air quality improvement and the energy savings you can see. And it's also kind of a creepy thing to do and can be very entertaining. So highly recommend doing that. You could weather strip your windows or doors to keep drafts out and heat in the winter. You could also get your appliances. Making, you could look at your appliances and make sure that they're not actually drawing energy when you don't want them to. Many of our devices have idle mode, which means they continue to draw power even when we're not using it. So you might think you've turned it off, but instead it's still drawing power. So you'll either want to unplug those or turn off a power strip when you're not using these devices. I can also talk to folks about smart strips, for example, for example, which are another choice for saving energy. And finally, I think this is an old Vermont trick, which many people know about. You can use curtains and shades on your windows to actually change the temperature in your low, in your home. So in the summer, you would close the curtains on those windows to make sure that the sun isn't increasing the temperature throughout the day. And then the winter, you actually do the opposite. You open up those curtains. So you use the sun and the curtains as needed to keep in or out cool or hot air, essentially. Okay, so for weatherization, we talked a bunch about that. But for renters and landlords, weatherization is still an option. Renters are eligible for the Weatherization Assistance Programs and the Do It Yourself Rebate. And rented single homes can qualify for comprehensive weatherization offers from us from Efficiency Vermont. There's also the Building Performance Program, which helps with multi-unit or multi-family residences. And you will need your landlord's permission to move forward with any of these solutions. But in many cases, they would actually be responsible for the upfront costs of the project, and then they would receive the incentive. So we can help you figure out what solution might work best for you in any housing situation. So even if you're not sure, I highly recommend reaching out to customer support. And then that's it for me, so I'll pop my info in the chat, and then Lea, did you wanna present this section? Or I am happy to do it as well.
I'm sorry, are you, should I be presenting this thank you section?
Oh, no, I apologize. Our next section is actually with Kyle, and we are just working through who to share screen.
Okay, oh, okay. So I can, I can share the screen, but we need to, I think this one needs to go, right?
There we go. There we go.
So hi.
Pass the mic.
You go. So my name's Kyle McDonald. I work here at Capstone Community Action as one of the efficiency coaches and operation coordinator. This is just a cool image that we put together a few years back to kind of gives you a sense of what Capstone stands for and strives to be. We do, we provide a lot of different services, not just weatherization. When we come out to a home, we actually discuss some of those programs with folks and try to present what we do and how we can help you, just not by weatherizing, but a lot of other services as well. You just want me to say next from next screen, or? Next. So the mission of weatherization is to help low-income Vermonters with basic needs and become self-sufficient. That's the Capstone mission. We serve LaMoyole, Orange, and Washington Counties, and we have four other sister agencies that serve the rest of the state. So no matter where you are in Vermont, or even the country, there's, there's Community Action to help you with your needs. You can see our phone number right there in our territory. If you want to apply after the presentation, if you feel like you might qualify, there's a phone number here. You might wanna write that down, or we're on the web as well, so you can just do a simple Google search and find Capstone. Next. This just shows you some of the programs we have here. So we have a food shelf, we have heating assistance. We have a Head Start program for young families that helps with like daycare, any other assistance you might need with a younger family. We had the weatherization program. That's what we're focused on tonight, and that's where I work. We just came out with a Mileage Smart program. One of the biggest barriers in Vermont is their transportation. So the weatherization program and Mileage Smart, they kind of go one and one. And we're kind of running Mileage Smart out of weatherization a little bit until we get up and running. We have community kitchen, so we teach younger people or anybody how to cook, and that's out of the food shelf, so we use food out of the food shelf to teach people how to cook, and then we've, we send those meals out in the community. And then a lot of those people go on to have good paying jobs in kitchens throughout central Vermont. We have a micro business development program where we help people get their businesses off the ground and running. We do a tax prep coming up here in the next couple of months. And we have a savings and credit program, so we teach people how to build credit and save for their future. Next, please.
I'm sorry. Okay, got it.
So to get more into weatherization, I just wanted to kind of put the other programs out there while we're at it. If we come to your home and you're interested, we could kind of talk to you a little bit deeper about it and provide you with some materials and literature on it. So the overview of Capstone's weatherization program, it's a no-cost program for income-qualified applicants. When we come out, we provide some energy coaching, so we'd come out, the first person that visits with you would be an energy coach. And we just discuss with you some ways to go about saving some energy throughout your home, fossil fuel wise and electrical wise. That's the first step of the program. We want to make you aware of how you could potentially save some energy and not just weatherize your home and walk away. We wanna be proactive. We want you to be proactive as well, if you can be. We have an Energy Smart program out of Capstone as well. So what that is, it's, it's a program for folks here in Vermont that don't qualify. They make a little too much money. They still wanna have their house weatherized. We just don't turn people away. We have an Energy Smart program that could could pull incentives together, provide a quote, an audit, and then if you wanted to follow through with the work, we'd actually come out and do the work as well. We take that money we make from Energy Smart, and we put that back into the other programs here at Capstone, so we put some money in the food shelf throughout the whole building. We take that money and put it in the other programs as well. We have a three thermal. That's, it's a department that works with bigger buildings that they'll put together some incentives, and they'll actually provide guidance throughout the whole program, and that's for bigger buildings, like five units and above. So sometimes there's a little bit more in those buildings that we can't provide you with, and that's when three thermal would step in and guide you and gather incentives and do some inspections throughout the project and take care of you.
There is a question about the, whether you guys do in-person home energy visits?
We are. Because of COVID-19, it's added a little bit more over-the-phone interviewing. So when we do, when we schedule appointments, we're speaking with clients and making sure they're healthy and up for a visit. Usually the morning of the visit, we'd call you again and speak with you and make sure you're still healthy and that you're still willing to have us in your home. We tried to do as much as we can over the phone, or even just outside on your deck and keep six feet away. We're wearing masks and gloves as well. We are doing in-person visits right now. But we're, we're doing a lot of interviewing over the phone before we come out and try to do as much as we can over the phone and making sure everybody's healthy and so forth. Does that answer the question?
Let's assume so.
Next. Next slide.
Yeah, I can hear you. For some reason, I'm having trouble advancing. Okay, good.
So this goes over some of Vermont's renewable energy goals. See. This is actually a little new to me, but we want to weatherize eighty thousand homes by 2022. It's a practical goal. It's gonna be challenging, but we think we can get there. In 2018, we weatherized one hundred and eighty-six homes. We did one hundred and sixty-nine apartment buildings. And through Efficiency Vermont's program, we did one hundred and fifty-eight one homes. We're retrofitted. So the eighty thousand homes, that number is more or less units. So the 80,000 homes, that number is more or less units. So if we did an apartment building, you might get 10 of those units in one job.
And this is the goal for the whole state, right, Kyle?
Right. It's not just Capstone. There's no way we could do 80,000 homes. Unless we expanded across all of maybe Barry. That's a statewide goal. Next slide, please. So this is, it's a breakdown of the income eligibility. It's a sliding scale. It's by household size and county. Everybody's, not everybody, if you're a renter or owner, you're eligible. It's not just if you own a home, we'd help you. It's, it's renters and owners. We do single family homes and multifamily homes. So you can see this, if you say you're a household of three in Washington County, the. Income eligibility is $57,806. So you just have to look at your household size and what county you're in and see if you qualify. Do qualify, it's probably a good idea to reach out. It's a free service. So. It's well worth it. And if you don't qualify, it might be a good idea, just get an audit done by, you could do it through any contractor, but we have, we're, we have energy smart out of our office. We do very good work. So it might be worth the phone call and discussion at least. Doesn't hurt to pick up the phone and make a phone call and just chit chat about your project and your house. First step would be, I would see if you qualify for the no cost weatherization. So. Next slide, please. So there's several steps to the project. The first step, like I mentioned earlier, is having an energy coach out to your home. We advise you on ways to save money in your, in your fuel bills as well as your electric bill. Efficiency Vermont, they actually give us a good amount of funding. So when we come out to your home, we can. Take a look at some of your appliances. If they're a little bit older, we might be able to replace them. We'd install new LED light bulbs around your whole home. And while we're out there, we check out your smoke alarms, your CO detectors, your thermostats to see if those. Are. Still working and up to date and up to code. If not, we would put new ones in when we come out. It's efficiency coaching. It's, it's new. It's probably within the last five years, the state's added that into the program, but it's. It helps a lot just to have a conversation with clients and get them comfortable with what we want to do and answer any questions you have. As soon as we can, the first visit. Next slide, please. So the next slide would be, an auditor would come out and an energy auditor, billing analyst. And what they would be looking at is how much air leakage your home has and how we can correct it and how much insulation your house has and what we need to add to it. A lot of homes do have. Installation, air sealing and parts of the home, they just don't have the whole house done. So there's leaks and missing insulation throughout. So we retrofit those areas and get it all. Winter worthy or summer worthy even. They would also be looking at some of your appliances, like if you had a propane stove, they would want to check that over to make sure it's, it's safe to run and it's not producing. Carbon monoxide. They do the same for your heating system. They want to make sure it's drafting properly and. Safety use before we tighten up your home. We don't want. Carbon monoxide coming to a tight building. So we definitely check those appliances out before we started the project. Next slide, please. The third step is we'd send out a certified furnace tech to service your, your furnace. They clean tune it every project, every job we do a cleaning and tuning. If there's any repair work, hopefully not, but if there was, they would try to correct it at that time when the furnace tech comes out. So these are all out of house techs. They're, they don't work for us. They're. Their own businesses. They do all their own contracting work. We sent out a certified tech. We just don't have any of those in-house. So. Maybe in the future, we might think about bringing in in-house tech, but at this time we don't have one. So these are all. Individually run businesses. They all do really good work. Next slide, please. The fourth step would be that you would actually see the crew would come out and start beginning the work. So. Most of this work takes places in areas or home that you don't see. For instance, the attic in the basement. You don't realize how much air you're losing to those areas because you don't spend a good amount of time down there. But those are really the most crucial areas of your home. It's like the ABCs of your home, the attic, basement and the center. So that's the order we'd insulate and air sealing would be the attic's the most important. Second would be the basement. And then sometimes we'd start thinking about insulating walls if it was a bigger home. Good news is with COVID, you're not going to see a lot of these guys. They're going to be in your basement and attic anyway. So you don't have to worry about. Necessarily. Interactions with other people. These people are going to be in your basement and attic. You won't have a lot of. You won't see them a whole lot. So it's not too intrusive at that time. Next slide, please. This is just a good visual of what we try to mitigate when we come out to your home. Becca touched on this a little bit in her presentation. You have a lot of cold air coming in the bottom of your house. And in return, it pushes the hot air up and out of your house, stack effect. So. Like Becca was saying, it's, it's one of these motions. It's coming to the bottom and pushing your hot air out the top. And that's why we seal up the basement and the attic. So it. Your house will hold what you put in it for heat in the winter time or it'll hold cool air in the base, in the summertime for you. These are the main areas we'd want to focus on. Next slide, please. Did you get back on the, the different steps of weatherization? That last slide was kind of just tossed in there, but the. One of the final steps is, is quality control. So when we went just through the work and walked away, we actually send out. Another auditor at the end of the job to do some inspection work. We want to make sure that we did all the work and that we did it properly and up to code and standards. If you had any questions, you could, you could talk with that auditor. We always send a different auditor than. Who began the project. So you'd have an auditor come out to do the, the write-up and the inspection of the home. And at the end of the job, you'd see a different auditor. So you'd have four sets, there are two sets of eyes. Auditor wise on the project. We always do really good work, but it's, it's a good idea to. Have a second set of eyes is to do a quick inspection and make sure there's some quality control there. Next slide, please. This is just a sliding scale of a fuel assistance and furnace repair program. So emergency furnace program, if you didn't have heat. Say it's an emergency from November 1st to April 1st, there's a phone number here you could call. We look at it like a 911 call. We get that call. We kind of drop what we're doing and. Try to get someone out to your house, get your heat back on for you. Like I said, that program, the emergency heating runs from November 1st to April 1st. After hours, there's a number, another number below you could call. So they would, we would help get your heat back on. We also can help negotiate payments with your fuel company if need be. If you, if you're having a tough time with them, we can maybe speak to them on your behalf. So you don't get disconnected and don't have a source of heat for you and your family. Next slide, please. And that's, that's our presentation. It's a little bit older button up image there, but.
Retro button up.
It is retro. It's a cool image though. It's got the scarf and hat.
Well, actually button up was started by Capstone. Little known fact, many, many a year ago.
Started here probably 10 years ago or so. Yeah. Presentation, but I think it gets the message across. It's a free program. It doesn't hurt to see if you qualify. You're only helping yourself and the environment. So.
Thank you both, Becca and Kyle. This was great. And again, we have these presentations as well as the recording available. If you'd like to access those for a refresher. Now we have 15 to 20 minutes. If folks are curious to ask questions. And I think I'm seeing. Popping up some questions. One was just a thank you and another is can I ask a specific question? It's a how to kind of stuff. So yes, that would be great. And here is another question. We have a laid up stone foundation. Should we insulate the stone wall on the inside or the outside?
Kyle, I don't know if you want to take that or I can give.
You would always, you want to insulate from the inside of the house. If you're having like water leaks, you'd want to do that from the outside to keep the water from coming in. But if you're trying to keep warm air inside your house, you definitely want to do it from the inside.
And. One piece to that, that's been really helpful to what you just said, Kyle, is that if you're not quite sure where to start. There's that description of a stone foundation. If you ask the Preservation Trust of Vermont, they might have a different reaction to what they would recommend. Then potentially someone who is a contractor. So I would highly recommend getting someone out there to actually take a look. Because it could be a very different conversation based on factors like, as you point out, Kyle, like water or. What the rest of the home is, the age of the home, a lot of that can factor in.
Something we didn't really touch on is, you know, some health and safety precautions too. Before you start this project, you might want to start thinking about having your home tested for radon. You can get a free test kit through the Department of Health. So radon is a new subject really. It's been here forever. Just within the last hundred years, we started building tighter and tighter homes and it's become a problem. I would get a free radon kit through the Department of Health. It's a radioactive gas that comes out of the earth. Sometimes it does happen to come into someone's home and it can cause. Lung cancer over the life, over about 30 to 40 years, the long-term health effect. So there is some mitigation for it. If you do have a problem, it's just a simple. Ventilation fan that could retrofit in your home, that could pump it out and then. You should always start thinking about addressing health and safety before you start thinking about tightening your home. You don't want to be stuck inside a tight space with some. Bad stuff. Not to scare anybody, just to make you.
So here is another question. We have a crawl space under one room in the house and there is no access to it. It is concrete wall all around. To button up right away, can we put foam insulation on the outside of the foundation? If so, what would I buy? Foiled faced ridged foam?
I don't know, Kyle or Becca.
We don't really ever suggest it's letting your home from the outside. It's a tough call. Really, the only way to properly do that, in my opinion, is you'd start having to think about cutting maybe a small trap door to get into there to do some work. Unfortunately, that's the proper way to do it is you'd want to actually get into that crawl space and do the insulating from inside.
Okay. I'm sorry, my internet is freezing up. So I turned off my video for a bit. But yeah, I would highly recommend. Again, even like getting the, just the quick virtual free home energy visit to have someone take a look. If you can't actually get into the space, that will pose a challenge, of course. There are different types of foam you can buy and I'm actually going to put in the chat some, we've got. Just examples of types of insulation, just like guide that we have on the website that might be helpful in making a decision about that.
Thank you. We have a comment here. It's a thank you comment. From Barbara. She says, one reason I have hesitated is this problem. The home is all button up. Used to mean to me trapping bad air inside. There's a question from Linda. If you have a radon test and it is negative, will it change?
It can always certainly change. They suggest usually having your home tested every five years. It's natural occurring. So you may not have it today. You could have it. Down the road. Your neighbor could have it. You might not, vice versa. It's probably a good idea to test every five years or so.
Right. Becca just put in the chat an insulation guide from Efficiency Vermont as well as some other resources earlier. Do we have any other questions? I'm not seeing any, so that may be our cue. I'm going to finish up by again thanking Becca and Kyle and to all of the participants for deciding to participate and spend a part of your evening this way. And I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for hosting.
Absolutely.